We are supporting Tammy and Kara and Mara. Do you guys want to introduce yourselves?
Sure, I think everybody probably knows me. I'm Tammy Shute, the executive director. And yeah, I'm Mara McKeon, this year's board president. I've been on the board for just about a year, it'd be a year in March. And moved to Mercer Island about two and a half years ago. So this is my kid's third year in the district. I have a fifth grader at Island Park, so last year in elementary. And I'm a seventh grader at IMS.
Hi, I'm Kara, I'm the new development manager. I've been here about a month, I think. I have two children in the school system, a ninth grader at Mercer Island High School and a sixth grader at the Annenberg Middle. And I haven't worked in a few years since I was with my kids, but I'm excited to get back into it. And I have a background in development, so it's perfect. But super excited to have her. We also hired a database manager who started today too. We're super excited to help her just to kind of clean up our database and do all the data entry and take that off. Kara or Bridget, who used to do that, you know, that was a big part of that job. So we're super excited from business and our little office with more people in it. But we're so excited to have them.
Tammy, can I have the board members be ahead of us to just choose themselves really? But there you go.
Yes.
And Eva, I'm Miss Unabated.
Dan Loewitz, a board member, this is my support here.
Christina Martinez, this is my first, I'm happy, this is my second year. Yeah, I know, it's been one year, it's been seven years now. I'm a junior legislative representative and I have two kids in the district. This is like an eighth grader and a 11th grader.
Hey, I'm Deborah Lurie, it's my eighth grader on the board. And I have a recent grad.
Julie Lee is my second year on the board and I have a junior. And I'm a lead-up with this one and also this.
And Maggie Tai, and I have a state line, years on the board as well now. This is my sixth year on the board and my, I have two kids who graduated former schools and are now juniors at college. And I have a sixth grader at our own school.
I'm a superintendent.
Karen Dadd is the executive assistant with finance and operations.
And so I'm an executive director of finance and operations.
Well, thanks for having us. So I want to kind of launch, and I gave you guys a little packet so you can kind of follow along, but I wanted to give you an update on our fall. As you know, we did not have our bonus on this year. We replaced that with a fall event, which was super successful and so much fun. And a good just community building event for sure. We had probably about 200, I would say 250 maybe people there. We can, perhaps we had about 300. So we will do it again next year and hopefully we can mass out. It was a little rainy back then, so I think that's why we have a few less people. I wanted to just kind of give you an update on fall. So we awarded 74 teacher grants this year. We spent $85,500 on those, nine more than last year. This is our biggest year, so the teachers just continue to ask for those enrichment, you know, programs and we're so excited to see them every year. Our fall, our fall event raised 182,000 this fall. And that includes the sponsorships, but just the sponsorships alone, we have 25,000. So we are nearing $100,000 in sponsorships. And for a small community, and we do not get Microsoft and we do not get those huge grants that other, other school districts get, that is pretty, pretty incredible. I think what's happened that we've seen over the years is our board will reach out to people they know who have businesses that may not even be on the island but are willing to support or have kids who are willing to support. So we've seen a lot of that. And it's just grown. And I have to give our, our old board member, who it's not, but that's us here, anyone who did last year really spearheaded that for a couple of years and it just took off. So we are continuing on with that, just to get 25,000 more in addition to what we had for the breakfast last year is really incredible. We, during our fall campaign, which is the All In For Kids campaign from September 1st through the end of December, that's our All In For Kids, we raised 623,000, which is great. That is the highest that I can go back as far as our donor database goes. That is the highest we've raised ever. Coming off of the year last year where, you know, we were down a little bit, that's phenomenal. Today, as of today, we have 756,000. We are almost 200,000 over where we were last year at the same time. We did get a $100,000 gift. I opened the mail one day, a couple of Fridays ago, and there was a check and it was from a foundation. I do not know who is associated with that foundation, it's based out on the beach, but they want to recognize this as a foundation. So that is our second $100,000 gift since I have been here since 2015. So we have a $300,000 gift, I think that was found before COVID, and then 200,000. So that's massively substantial. So that, that helps us get ahead this year.
And that's not even included in the $700?
That's the 756 under number one. Oh, so to date as of today. And you know what I did put in there was we had $20,000 sitting in the entity. So I had done this and so we have an additional $20,000 on top of that that's sitting in there. So we're having a really, really great fall. We had a great fall and we are continuing to move forward and kind of go no matter. There was a lot of community outreach. We always do, but I, I felt a little bit like it was, it felt a little different to me. I think it felt the same way that Bridget in the fall when we were out at new family events, just everything we could be at. We just felt like more people were stopping and talking and we recruited a few board members from these new family events, which was fantastic. Brand new to the islands, you know, one from Hawaii, just jumping in and, you know, cares enough. So that was great. So ongoing and upcoming initiatives. We have our Valentine's program, which we always, our Valentine's fundraiser, which is kind of a space filler that really does bring in if we max out on what we have gift-wise. You know, max is now, I think, 70, 70-ish. We, just to remind you, or maybe if some of you don't know, if people get a gift of 65 or more, we will send a card and a gift. And we need to trade out sometimes the gifts. We've done a lot of different things this year. It's a little jar of honey and some tea and some candy and a notebook. But it's always just a little fun thing for the teacher. And anybody who gives under 65, we still send a card. We also, from the foundation, send a credit that we still teach at in the whole district, so we do that too. The Peniante Scholarship, applications are open right now. If you guys know any seniors, please encourage them to apply. And the breakfast, super excited about the breakfast and have some really good news as of yesterday. Eva and Julius Perez will be hosting our breakfast. So it's the first time we're going to have students hosting. So I'm really excited about that. We're going to work, work with them and very glad, thank you for that. We also have, last year we had, we're trying to raise money for that Adamage table. And last year we had a rep out there with a computer. We have an Adamage table coming. It's going to be shipped, so we have to figure this out. But it will be shipped here, we will have, we will have her here, she's from Portland. She's coming up and we'll be able to. So if you want to do anything or anybody wants to do anything more with that while it's here, should talk about that and how long we want to do it. Yeah, so excited to have that. And we are, I am, I haven't really talked about this with anyone else, but I think that it would be a good idea maybe to announce that an Adamage table at the event after we do our guests, but we'll figure that out later. Our video this year is going to be very student-centric. What we want to leave the community feeling after they see this video is just how amazing the programs that are funded by them are. We are collecting a bunch of kids all over the district from elementary all the way through high school and it's going to be them. Each one of them will have, and I'm finding many of them have done multiple things around the district, but they'll either have participated in a grant or they're part of DECA or they're, you know, possibly in, in radio or we just, and even the young ones, we have a player and we have a Shakespeare grant that was given to our elementaries last year. And we have a little girl who was thrilled about it, some about her. So it's just going to be really student-centric with just a ton of kids talking about how amazing what they did. So we have a webinar, it's just going to be great, I think. And outside of that, I don't have everything nailed down yet. We're trying to figure out what grants we're using on stage. If anybody has ideas, but we're reading through all of that now. Any questions on any of that?
Is there anything special about like the theme for the breakfast this year?
It's Breakfast of Champions. We have not done the graphics yet, but I'm starting to talk to Brooke about that. No, it's usually just Breakfast of Champions. We'll probably have some sort of graphic theme last year. It was kind of back to the old Wheaties box a little bit. But we'll change it up this year, still spring for schools. But we'll, yeah, nothing, nothing major. We will be doing the art contest again for all kids throughout the district and we will showcase the three top winners of the breakfast, which we always do. We're hoping to use, we were talking about this yesterday. Every child who submits, we'd like to use our art in some way, maybe on the tables. I am wondering, I do have a question for maybe some of you. We in the past have, have done, we've translated our program and I didn't do it last year. Sophie Yang is kind of my person I go to to see kind of where we are in the community. Do you feel that we need to do that to translate it? Should we? I mean, it's, it's a tough one.
I, I don't think so, in my opinion. I don't know what the, I, I think that if you have a card that says welcome.
We did that last year, yeah. We did a welcome card with every language, I think, at the top.
Like nowadays, everybody has a form and you can do it in a different language. So if you had the cost, first of benefit. And for me, I think it was a fantastic, two titles on the third round of the competition.
Yeah, we had that last year.
It was fantastic. For me, that, that's, that was welcoming enough, but I don't know if you thought there was time to.
I think we used to translate it just into maybe Mandarin. That was the language, so we had, yeah.
And I would say maybe also reach out to, to those who are part of the Mandarin community. Because I know that this year they're still up here.
I think that's still a separate language here.
That might be important. However, I think that the other, if I be, I think that the little phrase they.
Maybe you could always put on the registration, like a box to check if they're interested.
Yes, okay. Yeah, that's my view.
But the, the welcoming is different languages. I was thinking, I was like, oh.
We did it hard, it's part of everything.
Yeah, I know. So I just say that if you decide to want to translate to a different language, it'd be other than the welcome for every single language makes it welcome. But yeah, that's.
Good feedback. So that's kind of where we are. And I know legacy giving was on our agenda. I had brought that up in a meeting with Dan and Fred a while back. Probably not in that meeting, we were talking about it though.
So, so I guess jumping ahead and maybe we'll wait to the second item, but I think naming facilities is sort of a natural tie in the legacy. And Maggie Tai and I can give an update. I think it could be an interesting new dynamic for people who might give that haven't. Just looking at those that are supporting bonds that weren't typically expected that have been affiliated with the naming committee.
And also people who already give and have like a standard and they give every year, they might want to memorialize, you know, what one or something like that and give on top of what they.
Yeah, so we're happy to give you a quick rundown, but did you have any, you want to start with us? You know, there, we did a wall training this year, we do that every couple of years and we did it this year. What I, what I took a look at was, I mean, I've been around a long time. But I was with the Boys and Girls Club, I think most of you know. And we, I came in during the capital campaign, so we were still raising money, but we were also collecting money. And they have named, you know, they have the big huge wall when you first walk in and they've got, you know, the big dummies there. But there are so many families, what I realized, it's not the younger families that show up as, at the giving levels that would be a legacy gift right now. It's the families who have been here for a long time. Many of them, I know, a lot of them from just my time at the Boys and Girls Club. But it made me think, you know, there are definitely some families that could give a lot. And whether it be half a million or a million, it's worth a ask. But I do think, and it's a legacy because their kids went through the district here. So, you know, but there needs to be some sort of recognition around that. It doesn't have to be, I mean, I, I did do a bunch of looking into it. Public schools do do it, it's not usually in a building, but it's, you know, sometimes, you know, a rink of a high school or it's, you know, or it's an art installation with, you know, that kind of thing.
So I guess jumping ahead a little bit, and the board hasn't seen it yet. And the board certainly hasn't voted on a policy yet. But it looks like what's taking shape is there was an interest going back a year ago, particularly to recognizing the legacy of Ed Hebbel and the basketball court. And so it spurred interest on the board, say like, that's, you know, an interesting idea, but we need to have a policy in place so it doesn't become overwhelming for the board because of all the various individuals who've left a legacy. So fast forward to the present, there's been a couple of meetings, me, Maggie Tai, Frank Shaw, who I think is also on the board of MYFS. And to come together with the policy, you know, it looks like the contours of that will be each year, maybe, maybe no one, maybe one or two individuals who've left a legacy and the district will be recognized with some facility. And it won't be tied to any money, but it'll then be an opportunity for those people who might want to give, for instance, no, at the basketball court or who is someone associated with the music program, right? Donations would be in line with that, to sort of recognize, to help recognize that. So I think it's, we will see additional funding if the board goes forward with the naming policy.
Yeah, right. So just to be clear, that's, that's the work of a committee that Dan and I and Frank Scott and other people were on. And so that's there, we had like, you know, staff members and students and parents and just community members talking about it. And that's kind of what the committee came up with, that there's no guarantee that what he wants to have a name in college. So the mixed up is for us to bring that back to a corner of the conversation.
And I think as a fundraiser, we look at it very differently. I mean, that's, that's a legacy, like a, you know, a character kind of legacy. This is more of a giving legacy. So, you know, it could be, it could be a wall somewhere where if you're giving it certain amounts, your name will be there, you know, forever. You know, it doesn't, doesn't have to be the big thing. But I do think there's some potential there to, to reach out to some families who may not even, I know, that have homes here that aren't even here. But, you know, there's, there's quite a few people still in the community who have the potential to get big and have had kids go through here. And I don't feel very tied there still too. So just might look a little different.
And we'll certainly keep you posted when the board has the discussion. There's also been some discussions around bricks and sort of, you know, that sort of legacy. Although I think the direction of, of the committee and we'll see ultimately of the board is that recognition shouldn't be tied to finances. But then once they are recognized, it could certainly be a springboard for fundraisers. But sort of like the sequence.
There's also potential for both types of, yeah.
Sure, yeah. I mean, a lot of, a lot of schools that I've looked at have big art installations. We have so many artists on the island that would be cool to do a sculpture or something where names could be added or the back of it has names or something, you know, but just lots, yeah. So just maybe in the middle. And maybe it's just a legacy gift for them. But that's hard.
Other questions?
I, I have a comment, or my question. I just want to share that there is a breakfast that it was, I think that two years ago or something like that. But it had a presentation about special needs, and the feedback from the community how it felt different because of where it was.
Everybody wants that.
Makes a difference. So, so when you think about planning, maybe something.
So I talked to Jennifer Pressby and Jesse last year about doing something again. They couldn't come up with something that was interactive like that, so I've asked them again. So we're, hopefully we'll have something. I mean, it's, you know.
It can be, it can be outside, it can be like. We have students here, but I have great ideas. How can I, the goal is to be ready.
You guys had me really good. I mean, I like the idea that kind of broke it up a little bit and everybody, it gave everybody a good laugh, but it also really, you know, made you understand.
It feels creative within our tables that you're sure you're there, you're quiet and it gives you that space to do something, so.
Absolutely, yeah. I am open to ideas. I mean, right now I'm kind of reading through the grants that we have that we can use. My challenge always every year is that, you know, a lot of teachers lose their grants in the spring and they don't always have it before the breakfast. And so I'm looking back and sometimes I'm using last year's. You know, it just has to be the right thing, but I try to change it up too. You know, is we'll have some sort of fine arts. You know, we haven't really, it would be nice to have trauma do something because we've had the orchestra, we've had, you know, we've had the player, we've had, you know, everything. So looking at different things and probably will continue to talk to Fred too about, you know, I just need to know kind of what's going on out there, not in the schools all the time. But I know what we're funding, so we're kind of looking. And if anybody has any great ideas, that's, I love it.
You're certainly welcome to look at Fred, but you should really do the things you're.
I know, I'll be working with Eva, yeah. Yeah, and both of you, yeah, I would love any ideas to pop for the breakfast. Have you both been to the breakfast? Were you able to?
I have.
No, you all are here, didn't you? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, well, we'll, we'll chat. I do, I did want to say too, I was like, you know, to end with what you guys can do to support us too. And what I, you know, we are just still trying to build our Facebook. The district has such a massive following and ours is not as big and we just don't get very many likes. I don't know if it's just not showing up. I don't know if you can help me with that Eva, I don't know how that all works. But if you guys, you know, I know some of you follow us, some of you don't. If you would follow us on LinkedIn and Facebook, those are our two biggest things. And a lot of times we will take district things, we work closely with Eva on things that we are funding. So he might go see them and I will share them and we do kind of the vice versa thing. But, you know, we could use a like too, I think it just helps. And then whenever possible to publicly acknowledge, especially now, you know, just a reminder, please acknowledge the foundation and, you know, encourage people to get involved or give. If you ever are, you know, talking to someone who wants to get involved, we are always looking for great board members. We're at maybe 18 and we can go up to 23. It's kind of what we like to mass up. And can I send you all up to be a table captain this year? I know you each have a community, Deb? Even though Joey's gone.
Joey's got the shit in common.
Would you, would you guys all be willing to do that?
You are.
And I don't, this is my year for table captain.
Okay, that's.
I just want to get understanding, just want to ask. Yeah, I will circle that down.
Yeah, and I will say that the same with last year. I think that that's my community is captain's fault, but to just.
Already, yeah.
So however, I am offering the same with last year. I think that last year I have now assistance, so if you want to give it to me.
You call us.
Buy them early. All the new families. And if they sign up for my service, but last year I think that all of them, the ones that said yes.
Were some of us, yes.
But I don't join myself pretty much, so I, I'm like, you can decide what to do with that. I can buy them and.
I'm also very happy to have you all there.
I'm very happy to recruit to come and also to take.
Same, yeah.
I'm happy to.
I'll do something.
Three?
I'll do back two.
Second, three.
Twitch.
One year.
I would just love you all to come. I really appreciate that. If you send me the list again, I will be, I will do it right early this year.
I really appreciated that. Christina last year took our entire new family listening from everyone. Personally, so if you want to do that again, it's not huge, but, you know.
I think that's great and I think the fact that there's, that they then choose to sit at tables with their schools like that people gather, so, yeah.
I'm happy to do talk about listening to you personally. Oh, my gosh, thanks. Every PTA will have a table, I'm sure they will, so you can just say, you know, either sit or be allowed. They can, or drop down and they can choose what they want, so.
And you can either put me at the captain or take me out and put me in somebody's table. I'm a teacher.
So no table captains here.
It's very, very. Yeah, people are asking really early.
Oh, Deb, you're going to do it all to us.
Oh, okay. But you do this.
Can I just, I just want to say, thank you for including us in the, in the fall event. It was super fun. It's, and a great food, great time. And I just, I love that it builds community. I think, you know, as we say, recover from COVID, it's five, four years ago. But, but, but I think people are really looking for those community events. And I've heard a lot of talk since then about, you know, it doesn't have to be complicated or high priced. It could be a happy hour somewhere where parents can drop by and get to know each other outside of school and outside of the kids. So thank you for doing that. I know it was a tremendous amount of work. And, but I, I mean, it was, I, I know that you guys have heard reams about it, but just, you know, I felt a little bit old. A lot of elementary school parents. That was okay, I mean, it's okay that I felt old, I just watched you in there, but I did. But, but it was really, but it was really fun and I dragged my husband too and he loves a good auction, so. That was always, but thank you for doing that and, you know, really thinking outside the box. Yes, you were, yeah. Thinking outside the box and finding something new that is attractive to our, you know, younger families that, that are really looking for that. I know as the Isle of Park auction kind of went by the ways, that's not happening anymore, right? Which is sad because we both experienced that. Is, that was a relief, that was a, that was an event that we all looked forward to because it was a way to get out and spend time with people that you don't always get to see. So anyways, thank you.
We'll build up with it. We're like, you guys are so crazy back in the first year, that was a learning experience and how many people you get there. I really do think a lot of the, I mean, the success of the fall had many elements to it. Having the event just drove a lot of buzz around our name and just being top of mind for folks. So even those that weren't there, I think we got a lot of donations that way as well. So really thinking about that half, we did have just as successful, if not more. And from now through June, the breakfast breakfast is obviously the biggest event for that. And so trying to get out in front of the community physically too. Because that was like, you're at back to school nights and just tell people about the auction. Like that was really where we can drive word enough. So figuring out how to do that with the breakfast this year, because we can have up to 600 folks. We've been at four, we're at 400 is kind of what we've been at the last few years. To create a big family, so we would love to really include more people to see the work. Before COVID, we did have over 600. We had 62 goals and standing room only. So, you know, we are, first year back was 375, last year was 440 something. So, and I know Youth and Family Services kind of engaged for us, so they're over 500 right now. That's really great for them. We usually kind of track pretty closely. I did have a thought, I would love some feedback on the side, we're going to talk to you about this. But I, I'm just wondering if maybe we do a spring event and move the breakfast to fall. Because it was October, that's really hard to have an outdoor event. I don't know, and we're also up against so many fundraisers in the spring. Youth and Family Services February, or two months later. I don't know if anybody has any thoughts about that. It would be a huge shift. It would also mean we have a breakfast and then another breakfast that maybe we'd make it look different for the first year and then it kind of rolls back into, I don't know.
I have to wrap my head around that because I'm so used to.
I know, I know, I know. And the people, I mean, I don't have to do that. I'm just, I was just thinking, you know, our event, it's nice to have it at the funny time. Although if it does grow and we max out next year, we're going to have a fun event anyway. To, you know, you prefer that, you want more people to bounce around. I'm just a thought.
Yes, thinking out loud with your brainstorming. For me, I think it makes sense. Because they always thought, they always thought that they have a lot, you know, have a services and then right away yours. So especially when I was going there in elementary, it was very hard for me to just figure out what I'm going to have those breakfasts and I have to, um, teach schools. So, so it makes sense. And also, it also helps, it compares our new to elementary. For instance, like usually we have older parents anyway that they know this process. And then in spring that they know the community, they have, they see this established and they can go to the party. So for me, that makes sense. Thinking how I went through the system, but I also think that it's going to be hard to do breakfast in one.
This is not a hundred percent, yes, I know. That's, I think.
I think that's just too like mind-boggling for me, so that's. You know, sort of fit and kind of.
I know, we're still.
I've been on for 20 or how many minutes?
Maybe, maybe it's time because if we do go above 300, I mean, it would be nice to hit 300. Oh, yes, or 306 or whatever it was at the fall event. And if we did hit that, then we would look at, we could look at it.
Do you have a suggestion though? Actually, I did go to the fall event and had a great time. It was really fun. And I, I heard a lot of people kind of spontaneously meeting each other. Like I was at the table sitting next to your new board member from Hawaii and we were chatting and then eventually we figured out that our kids knew each other really well. In fact, it's something I had sent with my kid for lunch that they had gone home in her kid's lunchbox. Right? But, but it was kind of a fluke that we figured that out. And I was thinking about how, you know, when you go to a conference, often you get tags that are like, you know, speaker or first year at the conference or whatever. You kind of need if there were stickers that just said like, what school your kid goes to, or whether you're new in Mercer Island or you have kindergarten or I don't know what, you know, something like that.
That'd be cute. It does make you something.
Yeah, because I saw a lot of spontaneous, like I was standing in line for food and I met like my almost neighbor or someone who was just down the street from my new house. And I was like, oh, like I would never have met these people otherwise, right? And so, so if they had had a sticker that said like North End. You know, I was in North End. I would be like, oh, where do you live? Yeah. We got ice breaks with.
Um, we're open to radio, so. From my way.
I would just add that we were, Matt and I were in a meeting before this, talking to some of our educators and, you know, we've got an amazing support network on this island. And, you know, whether or not it's boosters or the TAs, our foundation. And, you know, what it allows us to leverage is so incredible. And we were sharing and reminding, you know, this group that you know, our curriculum and structural materials that, yes, we could purchase, but then we can't do something else. There are direct things that the foundation does and that go directly and we can see exactly what it is. But the indirect things are what I always try to remind people to that because of this, then this. And the fact of where you are right now as a team in your fundraising, you know, is tremendous. And I, you know, I've been able to work with you families since the PTA days. And then all the way through. And then I know you've got new team members and board member, you know, who's passionate and it's just, it's so appreciable.
Yeah.
So thank you.
We've got a good team. We're not really, you know, filling everybody pulled out for that fall event. And that's really a lot of work. And that was amazing. So, yeah.
Also, the numbers of this event are amazing. Like they're positive return and it is.
I mean, it really, you know, I have to say, so many factors came into that. I mean, we had some really great live items. We, you know, people just came out and donated. We had, we weren't even going to do silent. Another became so many silent, they had to do a silent. And it was fantastic. Definitely an addition, but what really surprised me honestly after coming off of last year was the raise of power, simply just giving. People were giving at higher levels and then as they got lower, they'd give again. And there were people who gave multiple times. So it was, and I mean, you know, I, it was pretty incredible. We have two new ten thousand honor donors because of that event that created kind of our angel fund. Jessica Abramson, I think is going to do our ask this year for the breakfast. She's been on a lot with Abramson, five, six kids, you know, so many. You know, but she just, she was really fantastic during the breakfast. They're always very supportive, but I think she will do a great job with, with this family this year. Yeah, it was, it was a good event, but I really, I think our auctioneer was fantastic too. He was hilarious and he just would not stop. He, there was no stopping. In fact, we had our matching fund and he just, he just forgot. And we didn't even use, that's amused it later. But, you know, he, he, I don't think there was enough money in that one, you know, honestly.
It was, I mean, I was in a town and it had this, this vibe to it or like this, you know, people were like, I missed him so bad. You know, it wasn't, it was like such a like, oh, you really missed out on something great. You know, like, like versus like, oh, you missed it. Like get, get it next year or something. So I think the energy around it was like really fantastic. Super.
I don't mean to be like skeptical of the concept of switching the breakfast to the fall. It's more that you guys have done such a good job of making that like an institution on Mercer Island that I associated it with springtime. There's kind of like flowers and like, so in my head, I think breakfast and I think, you know, schools foundation, I think springtime. So I think if you, if you re, you know, market it as like, you know, cozy autumn coffee morning or whatever, like, you know, send it to people.
I know. It would be hard to change. I really love breakfast. And really, to be honest, it's such an easy event for us. And you know, the hard thing is the content, but it's, you know, you make three calls and we have chart wells and we have our A V people and our rentals and that's done already. Um, and then it's just our video, which is time consuming. And then it's the content for breakfast. Um, so it is a very, you know, locked up event. The whole high school, they know what to do. They get it done. If, you know, it's just such a great team over there. I would look to. It'd be hard to switch it up for me to. It was just a thought, but I want, I want to hear what you guys think because.
And I'm also thinking like from what I hear about, like I didn't go to the funny farm event, but I'm like, it sounds like it was more like stand up and like get around and like talk to people. Whereas the breakfast is like sit down, you know, like with the people that you already talked to. So having like a more walk around style event is probably good for like at the beginning of the year when you like want to meet new people, right? So.
Yeah, yeah. Good point. Yeah. Any other questions for us?
I'm just actually, I think we, we would have to schedule the government.
Thanks for having me, guys. People are generous. I mean, they really are. I don't, you know, we see all this chatter, but honestly, I really feel like, um, people are generous. You just have to, you could keep us getting in front of them and you know, it's harder now. We can't do that type mail and we can't, you know, we, we, it just, it's harder because we can't get in front of people. So every chance we get, we try. You know, and I think that's the best I'd ask for the foundation. So if you guys could be our best on it.
Are you going to just turn the camera as well or just?
What?
Your Instagram as well or just?
We don't, we haven't, we have our student ambassadors when we have them started and it didn't really take off. It just has been one of those things. Karen and I talked about it the other day. We're going to try to figure it out. I think we plan to poach again for a few hours to figure that out because it has to be connected to a personal account, which our Facebook and LinkedIn does too. It's fine. But, but yeah, we just, there's so.
I heard that the, uh, once you hit a certain grade, the parents are leaning much towards, much more towards Instagram.
This word right here is fully Instagram, right?
Yeah.
So we know that would be good. And, and actually there is a way when you post on Facebook, sometimes we post a lot that you can automatically have a post to Instagram, which I know we're, we were talking about, we just need to make it shorter. So do we want to do that? Or do we just want to have to post that in social media?
Talking about Donald.
Is she a master?
You can also post on Instagram and then have it automatically go to Facebook.
Talking about.
So our LinkedIn is, you know, definitely follow us, please.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And welcome, Karen.
Thank you.
People, are we okay with switching around? Just, you guys want to have an hour because when this council is ready to go, you can go to the council right now.
Use full of the.
Or. I docked in the.
You're not doing anything different.
To get a different order. Okay. So actually, we're not going to go in recess. We are going to do our board announcements, inquiries and reports, which I would start with a lunch. If you have one. Let's hear it from the list.
So, um, I don't know. We had the opportunity to go to Washington D.C. is, is weekend to, uh, voting for education. We had the National School Toy Association Conference and also we went and, and to the faculty and all of the staff, uh, the staff of our local officials. Uh, for me, I think that it was a great experience involving, I think that, uh, we, uh, yes, it was fantastic. Not only to present that project, it was fantastic. It's a way to, you want to improve something, it's fantastic. Full of history and very so much. And I really appreciate that. And also the experience of, uh, being there, I think, uh, advocating for schools, but also to think about the big picture and the, uh, global picture. Like I think that we do allow things like right now with the, the school foundation that is very wonderful. That is, we are, uh, starting about a way for, uh, and developing the legislation that states that all interact of, uh, are happening now, you get, and now it was at a national level and hearing the stories of the other districts in Washington and the nation and how different things are happening right now in Washington is going to affect those schools. So, um, it was kind of a great way to, to put my, our feet on earth and saying what do we want to fight for locally and nationally? And I do believe that all schools are worth fighting for. It is part of the democracy of this country. And I really think that that is something that, that it is a privilege that this country has had, uh, had the opportunity that every single child has, has an education and that they can achieve this potential. So, so I definitely think that, that we have to, I don't know, fight. I don't know how I was going to look, depending what happens. But, uh, but I, but I saw the energy and there's, 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 it was worth it. So I will say, I, I, I did brush and I will share it later with Michelle too. And I will bring the, your report for you to see. Some of the key points that we, uh, went and advocated, we met with, uh, Alan Smith's, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, that is in the chat. Yes. Representative, yeah, yeah. And the reason why we also met with, with, with the, uh, uh, the other representatives is because, uh, also other schools, uh, um, districts were not able to set representatives because they, uh, they're also very so, uh, in short form economically that, that we also were out there for them. So, um, Bill, it wasn't the same spot when we were talking, uh, so, so I will, uh, you're all good. Yes. So, you know, what, what the, the priorities were. Well, so the first priority was the E rate for, um, the S S C. So is this, this is something that I, I think that I will let you.
Is it, there's a lawsuit right now that will limit that funding and, and, um, it's from the Supreme Court and, uh, if that funding, that, that E rate is used to provide funds for progress for local and underserved communities. So it's just some network thing on the legislators.
Yes. So the second premise was, uh, we are in the idea, idea and special locations. Then, uh, it was, you know, it was, uh, Tyler One was the other one. And those two are, are, it will affect us if, if it goes a little bit. However, I think that the big impact is for our neighborhood communities. And whatever happens to them, it also will affect the state level because they know what happens to a lot of citizens if that happens. And as an example, I will say that I know of Bell has paid five percent of their students considering, uh, Tyler One. And it's the passive income number of students in their community, but Tyler One way has seventy-five percent. So the impact is real in our neighbors and it matters. And that being said is that we have to, we will be working with a couple of legislators with plenty of, they know that this matters and that this coming from the federal level matters to, to Washington's students. Uh, so, and, uh, and there were others that might not impact us, but it was the impact aid that is federal, um, scholars that go to to schools that have, that are on federal one or federal. So the, all the reservations and military bases schools depend necessarily from that one. So, uh, that was another one that was specifically to, to that. Okay. So, um.
I was just, I mean, I guess sort of like a slightly indifferent dynamic and I'm not sure which way it cuts, but one of the things we talked about certainly on our board is that we receive less federal funding than other districts. And that puts us at a disadvantage when it comes to staff. So to the extent, I mean, I understand the concerns in other districts for reductions in federal spending. But from a perspective of a district like ours that receives fairly little from federal funding and is also capped at the local level of how much we can raise would actually be somewhat favorable, right?
And making a competitive.
Other people lose out because their.
Well, it means that our, our district is less at a disadvantage when it comes to median salary.
We were mostly at work on a, this is like a, is a regional model of advocating for schools in our region. So not just for Mercer Island per se, uh, of what's established, established, like, you know, without particular circumstances, but um, working as a team with our regional members to, to advocate for the schools in the region as a whole. Um, we particularly worked closely with the Issaquah, the Bellevue, the Great Washington School Districts. Um, and really coordinated our messages and, um, and have, and it's something Christina and I have been working on here. Is, um, just building up our relationships with those boards that we're able to coordinate with benefits and so the benefits of, uh, more of us going toward the same goal. So while not every point that we're advocating for benefits Mercer Island specifically or Mercer Island the most, I think we're trying to approach it from a regional standpoint of, um, you know, rising type of self-loads.
But certainly the opposite could be the case. If the state decided to, for instance, fund, you know, to be a stopgap, if the federal funding, then that could harm Mercer Island. Right? By getting, by receiving less and a centralized funding. That's all, that's all I'm saying is that it's actually a bit more complicated that if there is reductions on the federal and then it's subsidized at state level and we receive less as a result. I'm all for understanding that there's higher needs areas and we just have to make sure, I think, that that's tied to programs and services um, that supports those, those needs.
I don't think that's a position that's, that's.
That's, that's observation.
I don't think, I certainly don't stand for that.
Um, I, I will say that, that, that as things to be over here, I think that it is important to to see how our work and pay your services here will react and will share their deals and will pay all enough of what they have. The reality is that the local players locally have to serve and ensure that every single student in the state receives and measures the impact shared, every single student, I mean, the whole school, so our students is included. Uh, kids in Delhi, kids in, 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 in Akota. So, so I think that it is important to see how it's the little picture and the big picture. And if those ones on the federal level go away, it will totally also affect our own students because things will try to shift at the state level. It will impact other school districts and it will affect the schools of the P S A of all our staff, the David Millian, who it will probably have a negative effect. But I think it's worth observing and not, not dismiss it in a sense that and not say that I'm saying this makes, I think that's a great observation. And at the same time, it's something that each one of us has to take really close look of what, what do we have, what's going to happen and what do we really about this country? Like it's our focus, if we were running for, let's go and fight and let's go and act as a victim. We don't think that that it is, and we feel that one of them is something that you have beautiful public school systems compared to other countries in the world and, and and it's, it's, it's totally worth trying. And that's my experience from where I learned. And my lived experience to have somebody that can help a public school industry that in a country that, that was not exist. And it can move like a lot of others. So, uh, it is a moment that, that it all is my success, and well, she was the one who can be the biggest, the only one who can catch care of it. In the fact, and that's my personal opinion on that. But on my report, this is what is happening here. And on the, the local level, there's some people that are coming and I think I have to look in all my response. Uh, but I think that, uh, there are so many important things that, uh, so many important things are probably happening at the end of February related to the, the bills have to go, come out of both committees. And then it's beginning to happen before the COVID four. So I think this is the time to start still ramping up our advocacy to to, for the bills and everything that we should, uh, get our committee and also keep a knife. I think that things are shifting, right? We're shifting and it's okay. Just keeping a knife, being active and being proactive, I think is what's worth doing. Just keeping an eye and being active and being proactive, I think is what's worth doing. Uh, not lose, uh, side of clearly, uh, so, um, that's my original, I don't know if it was.
So, um, just something very useful that happened at the conference, as you can imagine, the DC was in flux when we were there. Um, things are changing every day with various, as I think of orders and, and, uh, a lot of staffers were changing and on the L and on the industry side. Um, and then we had some very useful groupings of, uh, sort of things like in the state and federal level with the, you know, regular orders of Ossie and stuff, so where things, where people's best guess of where things were going. So I thought that was really useful in context for us. Um, with people who are thinking very hard about that sort of thing every day.
And last but not least, uh, as follow up after, I will turn the page and refer to Michelle for the next meeting, uh, regarding of different, uh, before them, so interesting. But, uh, with the planning committee of the council, uh, parallel problem next steps. We have learned that building is a, uh, timing partnership matter. We have absolutely lessons learned and less, and things that we want to do together. But one of the things that we really agree that is that, um, it matters that, that legislators see that we are talking to each other and we have things in common. And that's what Senator Lawton said when they came over here to talk to neighbors, talk to neighbors. Uh, part of the agreement, uh, yesterday's meeting, it was that when they had their own leadership that was their legislators, uh, one of, so, some of their group will be divided. So they know that we talk to each other and we have something like we are in the same, uh, with the same agenda. So the PCA will have, um, I'll be, uh, on, a meeting on February thirteenth and I will be attending, uh, as an observer there. And if I need to talk, I will talk. But it is, it is respecting their space, but also making progress that we are, uh, we are agreeing with, with whatever, that's our priorities as districts. So I'll just let you know that I will do that.
Um, yeah, as quickly, I testified yesterday for Representative Reed's bill on expanding the guarantee of college admissions program. Uh, one of the, uh, she gave a fantastic presentation. One of the really interesting things is that Idaho is actually one of the first states that's made it statewide. Um, and for those that is watching, if you get a three point O in high school, you get an automatic acceptance um, from that school because, uh, and, and for uh, our state, it would be all the regional universities. And then I think it is Pullman and Wazoo and I think it's Boffo and perhaps Everett through you down. Um, and the percentage for Idaho, they saw six percent increase. Or for Georgia, it was six percent increase and actually those going to college, which is enormous. Um, and a lot of those are first generation students. And for Idaho, that was the first, it was a four to eight percent. Um, so something that really can move the needle. And I think it is a great example of pragmatic, common sense, like.
Just so much doesn't think I go common, I try. Since Thursday.
Yeah, no, since you were like, oh, here.
Good. Um, I just want to read a statement and I'll give it to Michelle to put into the agenda, I guess, like, so this is.
It's my honor to serve on this floor. Recently, my personal social media has become a topical commentary. I realize now that's what I enjoy in the board. I should have been mindful of public posts I made or interacted with casually in the past. My thinking interpreted in light of my new goal. I recognize that my words carry weight and I regret any distress they have caused. Moving forward, I will be much more mindful on how my online activity may be perceived. Since the posts are in the public domain, I would like to address them briefly. It has been particularly painful to have charges of antisemitism leveled against me. Like many people of all faiths, I have been deeply upset by the situation in Israel with the horrific terrorist attacks of October seventh twenty-three and their long aftermath. I deeply regret that any members of our local Jewish community were upset by my interactions with posts on the subject. It is the last thing I would ever want. I'm avid reader, particularly of the romance genre, as, you know. As a reader, I have been active in a community of writers and readers online. These are books written by adults for adults. Reading and discussing books in any medium has been a source of joy for me from childhood onward. As for the rest, I can only say I'm human. I do sure sometimes. Although not in school or professional settings, I am not completely abstemious. I might have a drink to relax at home after a long day. But I do not endorse underage drinking, public drunkenness, or any type of uncivil or illegal behavior. This past week has been extremely difficult for me at a personal level. It is equally difficult to know that I have brought distress to my community. I bring my total self to my role on the board. I spent my career in public service and was living on Mercer Island and have volunteered extensively for our children's schools, teens, and for youngs. My commitment to serving our students, families, and educators remains steadfast. I hope we continue to moving forward toward our shared goal of the best possible education for the children of Mercer Island.
Since our last meeting, I attended a pack meeting at the Superfund. And, um, I have three items that I wanted really quickly just run by the board to see if you are interested in future discussions of them, if you want to future discuss it with. Um, one of them is, um, something that has been my little pet project since I got on the board six years ago, which has been very, very like to see us post for the summary of every board meeting, like a just control, this is what happened, this is what was discussed, this is. The minutes are, are kind of like a legal record of what happens during meetings. They don't actually, you can never reconstruct a board meeting from speaking minutes, let's put it that way. And now with all the new AI tools, it's very easy to take the video of the board meeting, upload it. It literally is amount of minutes to get a pretty accurate transcript of like, who said what and what happened, what the votes were and so forth. So I tested it myself for the last two meetings and run it through one of these tools. And I was like, impressed, like there was nothing I would have changed. So it's not as simple as that because right now we approve the minutes, all of us approve the minutes. Like, you know, whether we like to take the time to look it over or not, I don't know, but, but we approve them. So we would probably need to approve them as the summaries as a board as well. So that would, like in my perfect world, I would love to see them go up the next day, but I don't think that's possible yet.
So, and I know, like, we discussed this briefly. So on one hand, like, I think the transcript is great. On the other, particularly playing around more with like Google Gemini and like various like AI. Like how you get the summary, um, it can be captured much differently.
Hmm.
Um, so I, I'm just putting out there as, as a concern, um, that understand like a, a word for word transcript.
Right.
But summarizing, I, I, I'm, I'm not comfortable with right now.
A transcript would be perfectly.
Yeah, but the transcript, a transcript is okay. And then people can sort of run that through whatever, whatever they want to do.
Whether or not we want it.
Yeah. So, 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 so I think it's worth discussing. I think there's a lot of different aspects to be thought for whether we want a summary, whether we want a transcript. See some samples, you know, whatever. So that's just something, it, it sounds like I'm getting nuts and people are interested enough to put it on the future.
Uh, I, 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 it applies to whatever else I'm updating to.
Yeah. It's like, people keep saying, well, it's more transparent. You can't get anywhere transparent.
I saw that, um, our meeting or our study session on the twenty-fourth is canceled. And I assume that's because our speaker, we want to keep it and we can use some of that time to talk about communications. I don't know if there were other reasons why it was canceled.
Um, we ended up with the other speaker instead that we brought, um, in, so that's why that one wound up there. Um.
I'd like to do like a two hours of that discussion, communications.
Yes.
Was it the twenty-fourth?
Yeah, yeah.
So I believe it was at nine to noon.
Yeah, it was at least nine to noon. Yeah, nine to noon would be great. Because actually both my other ones relate to communications as it turns out. So, um, the next item is I would like to talk about possibly updating our public input policy, which was last looked at in nineteen eighty-three. It's just like, like the world has changed since sixty-three and it has come to my attention that our public input policy is, is, um, very dear of ours compared to, for example, the city capitals' public input policy that they're taking a look at or some of our neighbor districts policies that are much more specific about kind of just everything. So I think the spiel needs to be rewritten because the last time the, the, you know, sort of introductory, like the board, this is not a meeting with the board where there's guaranteed interaction with board members, whatever, like, um, that was last updated. And I don't remember before discussing it, that was last updated during COVID, like some of the language in it is actually so bit. Um, it's mostly about like remote meetings. So again, we've, so are we, yeah, don't seem, wear your mask. Um, are people interested in that? Yeah.
Um, then perhaps an idea, I mean, like at least from what we've worked on with naming policy, super helpful. Um, to just sort of put a repository of various like policies
Yes.
that people can look at to just get a sense of what's out there and comes and.
So are, are we asking?
I mean, I, I don't know if that would be a suggestion.
I can pull, you know, secretary, we can pull those together to have, um, that, those as artifacts that I'll be in the meeting. Post them a week ahead of time at least, see if I'm able to, um, hold. So, yeah.
Is there any way Fred, that you can kind of ask Wassa whether there's, whether there's any, whether there's any trend towards boards starting to use transcripts, like now that AI is making it so, see back track on the previous topic?
Um, yeah, I mean, if Wassa is easy or Wazda or, because I talked about that's not a problem.
That would, that would be good.
And then on the other input piece, we, full presence of Michelle, but she had looked at this policy. I think, was it, Michelle was at my first year as superintendent when we looked at it. Um, because it was one that we saw was nineteen eighty-three. And so we already have some things that we have, looks after that.
Every forty years, this is. Okay. And then, um, I want to make sure we just look at it break. Uh, the last item is, as you've heard, there's been a lot of, you know, talk to the community recently about social media used by board members. And that made me aware that we do not have a social media policy. And I went looking and it turns out some districts do, some districts don't. Um, but I feel like are people interested in looking at that, the aim of the developing, you know, deciding A, what one, B, what one, developing it to kind of govern us forward. And then also it does seem like, again, a lot of the, the, the sort of like guidelines that we run by are really kind of became about in the seventies, the eighties, you know, maybe the nineties.
And I think also maybe like the previous one, looking at city would be helpful as well. Because sometimes school districts, I think you just sort of cluster around, to be said, there is a model policy. So it gives a little bit broader spectrum.
Yeah.
I, I think that knowledge changes so fast. I have so many exhibition that was really, I'm sorry, like the, the AI is pulling from my brain. So I think that is truly, it's totally a conviction that knowledge is always.
Yeah.
And we're always, and how we.
And there's a lot of, uh, aspects to it because it's also like, if, if I see someone who says a total lie, you know, like the superintendent is a giant wizard or something like, can I respond to that using my personal social media account? Or like, you know, like that, like, or do I have to put a disclaimer of some sort, you know, so all, there's ones, I also see policies where, um, it quite clearly sets up what is, uh, you know, the, the board communication on the personal account. So it's, it's very easy to, for the public or for the board members to realize, hey, this is a communication that is to be seen. Yeah. Um, but I mean, I mean, you know, it's a question of not. Yeah.
That's a positive. We have, uh, we, and we have a community member who I've been communicating with and we have not connected yet, but, um, who is an expert in social media. Um, but with major corporations. And so perhaps there, that would be an opportunity to use this learning with that too. I, I don't know yet, but I'm happy to reach out, do anything I can to help. I mean, I have reached out.
So to summarize, uh, March, uh, it's on March, February twenty-fourth.
Yep.
So that's the Monday coming out of the winter break.
Yes.
Um, you're looking at a study session. Do you want it longer than nine to twelve or?
No, nine to twelve, it's like hour of the same.
So nine to twelve, we will put the other repository for sample policies, uh, in multiple domains, not just public, as it's uh, for public input as well as social media. And then you'll also have a conversation on, you know, how do you summarize things? I'll do, you know, I can find some things out about maybe what other districts are hearing and what that looks like. Um, I'm sure that Ian, he has a whole network of, um, his colleagues across the state that might have ideas too. So we'll provide you with information. Um, one thing of this is we will try to, um, we'll try to get everything at least, we'll get the, the meeting announced probably before we go out. You may not have all of your documents right when we leave for break, but over the break we'll get a transcript and I'll fly on.
That's great. You know, my students, it's great. It's really, okay, now you're gonna take a five minute break.
Particularly with the, it's like, you know, you can read, you can. Your first next.
But.
Camera disconnected from something.
So we are now back in session for part two, tonight's three part meeting and I'm gonna hand over this to.
Well, thanks for having us. I think redo a little call.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. And then we're having a. Issue.
For this slide, it's now more promoted.
Sure. Um, we'll start with the role. Her, thank you. Councilmember Andrell is absent. Councilmember Jacobson?
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds is absent. Councilmember Riker is absent. Councilmember Weinberg is attempting to try and Mayor Neese. Is here and Deputy Mayor Rosman.
Eric.
Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa. All right, Paula, yes, it's not my meeting, so I just say thank you for being the city council. We love the opportunity to connect, but we couldn't have everybody here tonight. We've got our soon Andrew Jesse Vaughn at the park director board meeting, councilmember Reynolds at the park director board meeting when they're doing some exciting work around parks zoning. And so I um, do we wanna turn it over to staff to start off on a presentation or?
We typically will just go on for a really quick.
Oh, you wanna do an intro? Okay, so Salim Neese, Mayor of Rhode Island.
Dave Rosman, Deputy Mayor of Rhode Island.
Chair Jacobson of Rhode Island City Council.
Derek Ryan, but administrator of the city's department of youth and family services.
Jason Skinner, chief operations.
Chris Letter, chief of police.
Who's he doing, student, junior student?
Ava Zhang, senior.
Dan Lowitz, school board director.
Christina Martinez, um, junior ledger.
Uh, Deborah Lurie, board director.
Judy Lee, board director, ledger, and.
Maggie Tetcher, board president.
Frank Reynolds, superintendent.
Matt Sullivan, executive director of finance and operations.
Uh, Brenda Fox, capital projects manager of fiscal district.
My name is William Curtis and I'm the assistant transportation director for the school district.
Karen Batterby, executive director of compliance that bears human resources for the school district.
I think it's all network engineer one tech department.
And Chuck Miller, it's any business superintendent.
I can handle communications coordinator.
Thank you. Now we can turn it over to staff.
All right, but I know we've got an agenda, uh, turning with some safe routes to school items, so turn it over to you, Justin.
Sir, so I think Michelle's enough of a PowerPoint, so we have a quick PowerPoint just to walk through uh, the eight projects that we have currently in our capital program. And the city's TIP program.
And TIP stands for transportation.
Improvement. Yep, and so, perfect, you go on the next slide. Thank you. So we have, uh, so the city adopts the budget every two years. We plan our capital program and our TIP, so we've done some public works and planning all of those for that. How we plan for a six year horizon, we update the TIP annually. Uh, mining the green team and staff work with district very closely, not only during the TIP planning process, throughout the course of the year. Um, the TIP is directly integrated into our capital improvement plan, so it's sort of the, it's the first step of our capital improvement plan as part of the budget, the budget process. Uh, we'll go through these eight projects real quickly. There's a map here on the right that shows you uh, those eight projects and the projected time for construction. And I'll just note that uh, the year prior to construction year is usually when our design is being completed. So usually designing year one, constructing actually years you're staying here. Next slide. So the first project we have, stakeholder construction is in twenty twenty six. Uh, and this includes the North Mercer Way sidewalk improvements. Uh, it still is a new curb sidewalk, ADA ramps along North Mercer Way between Vertana and Southeast Thirty Fifth. Uh, again, this on the north of the island, there's a burial here. Next slide. The second project we have in twenty twenty eight currently planned for construction is Southeast Forty at sidewalk improvements. Again, this is new curb sidewalks, five things on both sides of Southeast Forty and Gallagher. Uh, between Gallagher and Ninety Third. And I'll just reference, there's, and this, this project and another project right behind it were delayed. These were originally planned for a year earlier construction. But you may recall that last summer, the city went through a pretty big water emergency. Uh, we are in the midst of replacing uh, the early design phases and replacing that water supply line, building a new water supply line. That's actually gonna come from the boat ramp. And up, so down Southeast Thirty Six and up Gallagher Hill, so it's actually gonna impact this construction realm. The last thing we wanna do is build new sidewalks, curves and ramps, and then rip it all out and build a water line. So we'll be the water line first and then the board behind it. So uh, this project was actually delayed by a year. Next slide. Same thing with the Gallagher Hill road improvements, so I just referenced, that's where the water supply lines are gonna go in. Uh, this project's again, new curb sidewalk along the east side. Um, pay shoulder, suitable bike use. Again, the purpose of the safe house to school program is to improve, improve uh, bike pad connectivity within the community. Uh, and so this project is looking to do that. Gallagher is a little tricky because it's steep slope, uh, but we're still able to make some improvements along the way as well. Again, this will follow the water supply construction, tends to be anticipated between twenty six and twenty seven. Next slide. Uh, moving to eighty fourth Avenue Southeast, again, some happy improvements here, the sidewalk, the path along um, along this section. My understanding is that there is some intermittent connectivity here, but this is actually to replace and improve this whole section. Uh, again, this will be constructed in twenty twenty nine. Next slide. And then moving seventy eighth Avenue Southeast, again sidewalk improvements, new curb and sidewalk uh, between forty and forty first, there's an existing facility there. Uh, this will look to replace that facility and then actually building a new facility uh, on the east side between Southeast Forty and West to West Mercer Way. And that's construction in twenty twenty nine. Next slide. Uh, by the commercial drive improvements, again, new curb sidewalk from Southeast Side Forty, twenty ninety third and ninety sixth. And ADA ramps and new pen crossings at ninety six avenue. Again, this is on the Albiers, the twenty thirty project. Next slide. So now we get into Island Crest Way corridor. Um, Island Crest is sort of split, we have some short term improvements, we'll talk on the second, but also some longer term projects. Uh, there's enhancement at Southeast Forty Six, includes new pen signal ADA ramps, this is technically scheduled for twenty thirty. Next slide. But on the near horizon, uh, we have some improvements at Southeast Fifty Third, uh, which includes new right turn lane. And that westbound approach to Southeast Fifty Third Place includes new ADA ramps, improved crosswalks, which we know Southeast Fifty Third is pinch point for us on this island, uh, especially during the school hours. Uh, we have a phase one shared path, so we are working to do a shared west side shared path. Along Island Crest Way from basically Southeast Sixty Eight past, ultimately past Southeast Fifty Third, but we're doing in phases. Uh, so the phase one is that west side, west side shared path from Southeast Sixty Eight to Allen Park Elementary. And we'll show you a map here in a second, so bear with me. And then also in the near term horizon is Southeast Sixty Eight intersection improvements. Um, the intersection of Southeast Sixty Eight, Island Crest Way has been a challenging location for a long time now. So we're actually in the early design phases for that now, with construction anticipated in twenty thirty. So there's a lot of work happening in the design and planning phase now with construction towards the backend of the TIP and CIP. Next slide. So here's a map of the phase approach on Island Crest Way. So the blue, uh, the blue boxes are what's, we'll consider phase one, so that's where you see that intersection of Southeast Fifty Third. That shared path uh, in the middle of the screen there between Island Crest Park and Allen Park Elementary. And then the design work at that Island Crest and Southeast Sixty Eight intersection. Phase two is the shared path from Southeast Sixty Eight to the end of the first phase of that body of work. And then phase three is the final phase of that shared path north of East and Southeast Fifty Third. That is the Island Crest Way improvements that are on the horizon. And next slide. See Charlie, I have work being done out there now, uh, which is to sell new RRFBs or rectangular raptor flashing beacons. Sorry for that again and again, but again, Southeast Sixty Second, Southeast Sixty Third, and then new pet signal at Allen Park Elementary. Uh, that work is currently underway. Uh, in the public works world, structural, electrical equipment tends to be really, have really long deep times right now. And so this project was actually delayed because of some of those deep times. We have the majority of our equipment here ready to go and being installed, but we're still waiting on a few of those outstanding pieces. So we're gonna plan the coordination of the installation and construction around the liter bank and street break, so we don't have huge traffic. Still have some traffic impacts, but try and minimize those. So those are on the near term horizon that'll be done here this year. I believe that's the last slide.
Yep.
Perfect.
Can you explain what the RRFBs are actually like, are those the things like embedded in the street or are they?
It's actually a signal, so it's a, it's actually a signal you push and it stops traffic. So we're moving away from those ones in the street, um, those tend to be, they're costly to install, but then also really challenging to replace. So the RFP is a new, the new technology, the new washlaw standard for that type of technology in intersections.
So when you're the show station, right, or is it Chevron or show?
Correct, there's one.
So, you know, that project in Island Crest Way was born out of uh, what initially was an Island Crest Way safety corridor analysis. And we had hired a consulting team to go through the whole corridor and discreetly catalog and survey and study each of the, the life safety issues. Anything that addressed life safety. And that was a slew of things that we didn't touch on here until Jason's cruise credit. Uh, things that have already been addressed, there was a lot of sightline issues, there were street lighting issues. Uh, there's a lot of signage through that corridor and certain signs didn't really catch the attention of drivers, so. Uh, you've probably seen a lot of those reflected poles or post wraps that have been added to signs that have a different level of reflectivity. And so initial improvements were around signage, lighting, vegetation, sightlines, sidewalks on the east side that had cracks or roots uh, that needed repair. Uh, and then the longer term improvement is that west side kind of bi-directional bike pad. Uh, path that will take some of the load off of uh, the east side. I think what we learned in that study is there's just an incredible amount of volume of multi-modal, you know, traffic through that corridor. There's bikes, scooters, e-bikes, uh, cars, burning movements, you know, buses stopping, loading, school movements. Different traffic speeds with school zones, you know, going from thirty five down to twenty and then picking back up and. Uh, so we've spent years looking at that corridor and how, how can we discreetly address things from a safety perspective? And then moving along to kind of an efficiency perspective. And as you look at Island Crest uh, elementary school and your kind of long-term capital view and, you know, over the next decades. That's gonna be an opportunity to also look at how we can take some of the queuing up Island Crest Way, relieve some of that, that traffic uh, congestion that happens, you know, just a couple of times a day. Uh, and continue to make safety improvements for sightlines and queuing and traffic. Uh, it's been a good process, I would say, that we haven't done that anywhere else in the island at kind of a safety first uh, analysis perspective. It's, it's one of the elements ties into any transportation project, but this was truly started in safety and then allowed us to prioritize projects and then. Begin to solve them in a kind of discreet way, it's a nice way to move through that project.
And just a reminder, and we have a, at least my tenure in the district, we have a long partnership with working with safe route to schools, with our schools. The form of the very first projects that I worked on uh, in two thousand nine when the principal at Lake Ridge was right at the corner there of Seventy Fourth and um. On the out Jason's uh, down at Lake, right by, it's right by the South Mercer Fields. Um, that major intersection right there, they put in the raised crosswalk, there were no crosswalk or there weren't any sidewalks going into Lake Ridge. Um, so one of many projects that the city and the school district have worked on over the years. And I know that, you know, there's been instances where, especially when it's adjacent, as you're talking about mayor, to one of our schools is where do we partner on that and where can we uh, improve? I know we did some work across uh, Brandy at Ninety Second several years ago too with the path. Um, and that was part of a safe, a safe routes to school, so a number of things that we've done over the years.
Yeah, and I would just, um, I would echo, I really appreciate the partnership we all do. Tony was here, he would uh, echo that as well, that each year your transportation engineer, you reach out to the school district and, and we meet and talk about, you know, what's affecting schools? And whether there's a way to work some of that into the TIP, so we really appreciate that, of course.
I'll just say to you, the TIP is fluid, right? So it's, even though it's a six year plan document, but things happen and the district has priorities that get elevated. And that's why we work together and maybe it's up and back accordingly, based on what comes up. So it is something that happens and it doesn't just happen in the month time, in the springtime we do the TIP, we're talking all the time, I mean, crutches, block your bus drivers, I mean. Stuff happens right now during the weather event, we're in constant coordination and communication, so our team work very well together.
Uh, I'll add that, you know, when we think about a west side uh, bike head path on Island Crest Way that uh, could start at Island Crest Way and head south, take some of the load itself of the, uh, on the east side, move it to the west. There's an area that we've improved around Island Park on that crossing. So you might know that when uh, that previous signal was in there, there was a lot of fixture in, there was on the west side, a lot of control boxes. Uh, we've done everything that we can to kind of minimize the impact of infrastructure, knowing that we wanna have a west side path. Uh, but there's also opportunities with your fence lines and vegetation and, you know, that frontage of uh, Island Crest Park heading towards uh, PN, PN's Children's Park. You know, that, there, there's gonna be some opportunity to talk about pathing and, you know, maybe that fence line has a little bit of room to give to make the, you know, the best path through there. Because it's a real congestion point as it's kind of scoped right now. But we did, we'll leave a lot of that area utilities and hopefully that'll be an improvement moving forward. And then of course, you know, as on Crest Way has a permanent solution, then the traffic in front of it could probably improve in terms of bike pad safety.
This is great to hear, like, I mean, the city was working on this, but like hearing the specifics, something that I did actually see the, see it on the map is really helpful. Parents ask us about it, we like, don't worry, it's happening, it's, it's motion, maybe another year or two, but um. Speaking of bike pad safety, are you guys able to talk a little bit about um, the bike scooter issue that we've been grappling with both the, the school district and the city? How to keep kids safe that are running around on these things?
Yeah, I think we got a lot of coverage on that, we have Chief Sutter here who. Probably touched this more than anybody, do you wanna take a few?
Uh, we, we are very uh, excited to have uh, our, our school resource officer uh.
working with one of the associate principals of the middle school to put on a, an assembly or informational type meeting with the student body. And I believe parents are invited to that as well. And they, they have a pretty robust plan to, to share up information that would be age-appropriate and informative to the, the audience and to keep their attention. And I believe that is scheduled in the next month or so, like in March possibly. And then at the high school level, the feedback that I've received was that type of assembly may not be as meaningful for the high school-aged students. And try to get the information out using some of the student-led avenues of communication and really, really try to get the word out to, to the, the student body and the parents about the, actually the state laws that are already in existence regarding assisted, electric assisted bicycles and scooters and the difference between a, an electric bicycle and an electric motorcycle. And so we, we have actually seen a decrease and it could be in part due to the winter months. We'll see as the weather starts to turn nicer. But I, I think the educational campaign that we have started on has, has started to show some results.
That's great.
Thanks, Tyler. On that note, you know, the chief has to, I give a little further than him, being a super politician here, but this is something we really need the community to buy on. You know, we've had a few kids that the police have tried to stop to talk to you about wearing a helmet and they've they've gone off, we'll put it that way. You know, and this is something where if a parent is buying an e-motorcycle for their child, there is very little that the city can do to stop that. I mean, that, that is something that, that parent's making a decision, I wouldn't agree with, but you know, if they're going to do that, then he understands. Hey, what they're buying, these are legal. See, how are you equipping your kid here? You know, helmets, other riders and we've all seen things like this. So, you know, it's, it's something that, you know, we've also we've taken a really hard look at this. And, you know, we took a couple of proposals in state legislature. They were not honestly all that interested in it. And they're really pushing adoption of e-bikes. So we come to them and say, hey, can you put the brakes on this? No, I'm not intended. They, they're not settled with that. So, but we are also looking from the city perspective, what can we do about our own rules as it comes to riding in parks? You know, it's a thing, I've got a boy who likes to skate mark, a kid on an e-motorcycle probably shouldn't be in that, in that too. So obviously that's something we're taking a look as we get closer to summer, but the chief and his team have done a really good job here. It is, it's hard if it's not something the community's really thought of to try and change the, the culture around. We are, we are trying and we're sort of trying to fall over if we can, but it's not an easy, I don't know the other term, but it's not an easy hill to climb here.
Thank you. Just from the, from the school perspective, I'm on the middle school of parents pack. Parent, teacher, advisory committee. Thank you. Whatever they stand for. And they have also been commenting on the partnership with the city and with SRO in terms of, in terms of really educating our young people. They definitely see it much more at the middle school level in terms of, I think Lucy commented at a board meeting, how, you know, as she's learned how to drive, understanding the rules of the road, oh, being a bicyclist, understanding the rules of the road and that the middle schools don't, middle schoolers don't have that knowledge, which contributes and also the, you know, lack of brain development in terms of safety. And that's just natural, right? It's development one-on-one. And so the middle school is, you know, I, in the same place in terms of really educating parents and talked about before the holidays where there's lots of gift giving and really educating parents, like here are the differences, here's what's legal. And the only thing that the middle school can control is while educating our students and then also ensuring what's brought onto campus as part of the school. So talking about whether or not they have to like, not necessarily sign something, but how, whether or not they're permitted to park their vehicle on school grounds during the school. So I just wanted to echo the partnership and the educational aspect and they recognize, I went up from what I've seen. The staff there has really recognized that they're in a great position to be educating our students as well.
Yes, I bike race in a pretty heavy cruiser and during the training a lot. So I think definitely appreciating all the work you guys are doing to making it safer. And yeah, I mean, this scares me with e-bikes. I know I started biking around middle school as well and it's definitely much, much more difficult to bike on the roads when you don't really know what's going on around you. And so that education about, you know, not just like, don't get an e-bike, right? You do have one. Like, how can you be safer? Like stay on crosswalks and stuff like that. And so really ensuring that those kids can have a safe place to ride their e-bikes. Because inevitably kids are going to have them and really just trying to make that a safe environment sometimes. So I think a lot of the roads that kids are biking around, you know, don't have these big paths and they're biking in the road and stuff like that. So definitely cursing that. So this is great. To just chime in on top of that, if this is, if the island were a flat desert plain, e-bikes probably wouldn't seem quite so appealing. But I know a lot of kids in my former neighborhood were getting e-bikes because just to get out of our neighborhood is like a big uphill climb. So then, you know, it's helpful to get up that hill, but then they just were going a little faster than like as a parent, I was comfortable.
This is just an and, and I think it's an example of where the, the two entities work together. Deputy Mayor, you sit on the PTA council and there was quite a, quite a lot of feedback for you that you took back. And then Chief, you have attended. And so the way that you have engaged our PTAs, our principals and others, I think shows hopefully the community are trying to work at multiple levels, but I know there's been a lot of work there and just acknowledging that listening that you did and then took back reaction. So thank you.
Appreciate that. Listening is a, it was a good work. You told me some of that.
And I will, with the and, maybe an opportunity during a back-to-school week, also engage the, the elementary and maybe PTA, but also bring that to the fifth grader parents that will be coming to will very soon. Probably will start buying those e-bikes will be a very opportunity for involving them in doing a part of just buying in the community, right? And also something that came into my mind now, in my personal life, I had a conversation with a city staff in Redmond. And he was mentioning at one point in the matter of it's still current or not, but they had a student advisor. And how it brought a different light to how they do things. And I think that this is a great, like maybe having these students or something like that in the city and a opportunity for leadership for the youth. And also something that they will tell you, maybe this is the street that I take and this is what I've seen when I walk. And I give you a different perspective of how they behave than the adults that we try to see. And I think that for me has been a difference, your voice on how things work than when I see it from the adult perspective. So this was a great conversation.
It was just to answer that Councilor Wyatt has his hand up.
Hi. So can you guys hear me okay? Yeah, yeah. So I remember when growing up on the island that we used to have something called a bicycle rodeo, where the police would hold an event at the grade schools, I think also at the middle school, where they'd set up cones in the parking lot and there'd be competitions and everyone would get an award based on how quick, how well they could maneuver their bikes, but it's also about education and about learning how important it is to wear a helmet and you had to wear a helmet in order to compete in the, in the rodeo, et cetera. It was fun for the kids. It got a friendly interaction with the police and it got education out there about it. I wonder if something similar might be worth exploring for this new generation with electric scooters and electric bikes in order to get education about, you know, when you get to this age, this is the type of bike you can upgrade to. And when you're in this particular age, these are the types of bikes that are available to you. And then have something that enables people to take something back from that. It doesn't have to be super expensive, maybe a reflector that has, you know, a Mercer Island Police logo on it or something like that. But something that would make it fun for the kids and also educational.
And hopefully we don't leave all the kids desperately wanting an e-bike. Thank you. Any other questions to comment on that? Um, next item is long-range facility planning, so.
Sure. I think we want to talk a little bit about some of the capital projects that we're working on and I'll turn it over to Brandy. Just to talk about some of those and probably the biggest one coming up over at the pool. But Brandy, I'll kick it over to you.
Our current capital projects planned for this summer are some repainting of both interior and exterior of the elementary schools. Last summer, we replaced boilers and carpet throughout those elementary schools, the older elementary schools, not Northwood. And probably our big project this year is we're doing a progressive design build project for Marywake Pool. So that was funded in part by a $2 million grant from King County and then $2 million from the CapTech Fund. CapTech levy for the district. And GLY construction out of Bellevue is who we selected to do that work. And we're in the kind of early phases of design. We're working with city staff at this point about draining the pool on the eighteenth of February and doing a pretty major inspection of the pool bowl to determine how much repair will need to be done. And then also working with city staff around some life safety issues for the building with construction planned for this summer. So some of that work is permitted, some of that work won't require permitting. But that's, it's a pretty major, yeah, short duration project for us to get done. Any other projects you want me to touch on?
I think those are the, those are the main ones. Have to take questions on those. And then I know you also have your bases, but questions on our projects that we have.
I don't have questions. If you want me to talk about some of the projects, yeah.
So, you know, we, we've gone through, I, I feel like this might be a rerun from last time we're here because we've been talking about capital facilities for a long time. We had started the capital facilities assessment that was going to be citywide. And looking at all the inventory of the buildings that we have, everything from what's down in Luther Burbank and boiler buildings and old schools, the, you know, community centers, Mercer View, all the way up to City Hall and beyond. Our City Hall, you know, we discovered the asbestos. We had to kind of immediately investigate the, the sources of those things and investigation led to just a parade of horribles. And the more we looked, the more we found and it was eventually decided that since it was in the ducts, it was in the ceilings and it was everywhere that there was just no chance to reoccupy that building. We permanently closed it and the cost to pay it is more than the value of the building. So we now turn our attention to, you know, the essential kind of core needs of government and those are for us, public safety, public works, things like IT, GIS, emergency operations, customer service, kind of front-facing functions. And so we're in an early design phase of a public safety maintenance building that will be sited on the, the campus of the City Hall. And the reason we cited on the campus of the City Hall is that public works and the police have a lot of vehicles. There's a lot of equipment. There's a lot of movements in and out of there and you just really don't have an opportunity to site that anywhere else. I know there's been discussion amongst the community about citing the City Hall and Town Center, but you would be moving a couple, three-hour vehicles and trailer and have the equipment into an area that is probably the least conducive to that. So we're in the, we've had a study session in early October with the council. It was the our annual planning session of the council. We went through hours of looking at design decisions and opportunities for that building and how it could be laid out and provisioned. The council's going to be looking more at that. Try and get to kind of a five percent design standard and then we're going to be looking at finding options for how to fund that. And all the meanwhile, doing the same kinds of things that you do, putting paint on things and fixing fixtures and keeping up with the facilities that we have. So I don't know if there's any.
Okay, just outside of that. So part of it is, we don't have, don't have a new building to go into right now. So we're trying to keep our buildings as low as you are. So we have a seismic retrofit happening at the Public Works building right now, just to try and extend that useful life another five, seven years. So hopefully the new building can align. It is not, it's not sexy work. It's not, it's not, it's, it's, you know, structural stuff, to be brutally honest. It's all, you don't, can't really see a lot of it, but it's very expensive and very time-consuming and very impactful. But it's a necessary thing that we have to do for a prolonged useful life of that building. We go through the other exercise and so that's happening. You know, most, I will say it, just facility-wide, although the facility side perhaps with the closure of City Hall is a little different than normal. The capital program as a whole for the city is the most aggressive capital work we have to date. And so there's no, there's no resting in the right direction and it's all things utilities, nothing general government that's happening as well. But the seismic retrofit and the PSM layer, the big facility projects we have going on right now.
Something to add, the mayor summarized that three-hour meeting in three minutes, but if you want more details, we were there for a long time on Tuesday. One of the things we're going to put in that building or at least in this book right now is sort of a front desk for C-Hall or for City Services, sorry. So, you know, anything for permits, police records, that sort of thing. Is that, that's not, we just don't have right now a sort of a storefront. So that, there will be a pilot component to that, to that building as well, which is obviously great, but also complexity. We have some pretty sensitive things going on on the other side of the wall. So I think we're on good track with that, but it is pretty early going. We had a really good conversation with the other day, but it's, it's a project that, you know, Ted, Ted will agree with me on this, that, you know, this is a long-term building. So we don't want to make some big decisions about looking towards the future as well. So it's a, it's a visionary project, but it's slow at the same time for, I think, a good pace versus precision question.
And Chief Sutter is very gracious about it. He really likes this new portable building, something the district knows a lot about, but you know, the police department has obviously facility needs that are very specialized in. So we've worked with a manufacturer up in Canada to build some portable buildings for the police department and they brought them down. It's less than ideal and maybe that's a gracious way of saying it, but we appreciate everything that Public Safety's doing to that will work in and around their temporary digs. But it's, it's a challenging situation. We've got a lot of folks that could go work anywhere else and they could have a very new police station like what's over at the University of Washington. A very large police station that's what Kirkland has. And so we compete for resources around the region and these resources are very difficult to find. And when you find good ones, you want to hang on to them. And so that's a long way of saying thank you to the folks in public safety for putting up with us. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, I think one of the things that we've learned in thinking about the bonds for the school district or one of the feedbacks we got is how appealing mass timber is to many members of the community. It's environmentally sustainable, aesthetically appealing, at least in our case, was not that much more expensive. I mean, it is a premium, but I think also like on the energy side, you probably get that back pretty quickly. So anyway, just something to put out there when looking in sort of like more particularities, I think that there is a very strong response if you can show the environmental sustainability of different, of different building methodologies. The other, just sort of looking at the school environment and of course, each district, each project is different. I think Issaquah is going to be very telling. In November, they didn't pass a bond. They very quickly regrouped and they have one on for February. So I think that one, it shows that the time period can be pretty compressed to sort of do a do-over or to adjust plans depending on where the public is at. And I think if it doesn't pass, it's going to perhaps say that people are very nervous. I mean, particularly with AI and tech and that was, you know, sort of the sentiment in this area for the last 25 years, I think it's been very positive. A lot of software jobs, a lot of highly compensated tech jobs. But I think for the first time, there's starting to be anxiety in the community of whether those jobs are going to be there in the future. Particularly when you look at bonds that have long durations. So I don't know, maybe it's reading too much into what will happen in February, just in a few weeks in Issaquah. But I think some lessons perhaps can be learned either way.
I'm, I'm going to recommend Councilor Jacobson next, but I wanted to just chime in first to say I was very skeptical about mass timber and I will say most of the word was when Dan first mentioned it. And I have actually come around to thinking quite highly of it. So I don't know if you, as a, as a group have looked at it much yet, but it is more earthquake safe because it flexes instead of, you know, kind of collapsing. It's also earthquake safe because it flexes instead of, you know, kind of collapsing, it's also lighter, so it's not hanging down and crush your people and uh it's also many fewer, um, it's a lot less carbon and many fewer trips to deliver it, so you end up saving some money on that side as well.
Along those lines, we're, our uh design team is pricing uh three of the structural alternatives, uh that both the timber, steel, concrete and there are advantages and disadvantages to each one of them and price considerations. What I was going to say is, you know, from what Jason has said and and shown here and what we've talked about, we have a whole lot of things on our uh our plate or dance card, however you want to look at it, to be done. One of the challenges that we've had in the last three or four years, we've had emergencies, which uh several water emergencies, uh other kinds of things that were required, uh both expenditure and and begging the island people, for example, lots of use, as much water and hopefully, uh with sixty and seventy-year-old infrastructure, we're so naive to believe that we're never going to have any more of these, but one of the things that these emergencies do is start shoving some other stuff that we'd like to do down the line and a good example of that is this rerouting of a water system, uh which we think is an urgent uh thing to be done in the city because we had eight thousand gallons in those tanks, uh eight million gallons. Slipped a digit there. Uh, the uh, but that could all, that would all be gone in under forty-eight hours without being replenished and that has implications for fire because the fire trucks attached to hydrants, so there are a lot of these things that we're, we're struggling with. Uh, and we're, you know, this city council, PEC City Council, since I've been on it twenty-twenty, has only stepped up on the capital end of things and and I've decided we're, we're not going to kick anything down the road, we, some stuff we're not going to get to until twenty-three, as you see, but we've got lots to do uh to keep this island's infrastructure operating the way the expectations of our citizens have set for. So, um, keep your fingers crossed and be pray, just pray that we don't have any more of these water, water uh events or things for that sort of stuff.
Thank you. Ted, I see, but I'm recognizing Deborah Lurie first and then you.
Um, so uh Director Temper asked me to kind of, to our ask here, um, as, as from sure you all have heard, um, the board uh voted five-zero to put forth our bond um in the amount of hundred sixty-five million dollars in April. April twenty-second, I believe is the last day of, but obviously it's, it's voted. Um, where uh this has been years and years, as, as uh Councilman Jacobson said, you know, it's a years-long project, we understand that as, as well as what you're going through. Um, as, as you all know, that our buildings are sixty or seventy years old, um, we, they went through, some went through major um renovation in the nineties. Um, the middle school, we did half of it in twenty-fourteen, um, the, the high schools had some upgrades uh throughout. Um, and then obviously we built Northwood Elementary School as part of that twenty-fourteen bond as well. Um, since twenty-fourteen, or at least I can speak to twenty-seventeen, we've developed a facilities plan. Um, we, we redid the facilities plan after, I think, because it's, it's a living document. Um, and really looking to see, recognizing that we have a whole lot of facilities um that we have to cover um that need to be upgraded, we've looked, um, so we developed a plan um with community input, had a committee of thirty to forty community members, uh some city members on it, um, as well as parents, staff, um, as well looking at the needs um and as well as the conditions of the, of the structures. You know, it's no fun to be building, um, you know, putting, replacing boilers and um painting things that and and putting on new roofs of a building that you know needs to be replaced, um, but just can't wait any longer. Um, and so uh I, I think the board as a whole is really proud of this plan um and grateful of the, the work that, that Brandy and and our staff has done um in putting this forth and and I think that um one of the things that you know, kind of summarizing this meeting is how unique we are in terms of where our city and school boundaries are one in the same and I think we're the only community in the state that has that. Um, and really having the opportunity for our leaders, whether it's, it's staff leaders or elected leaders to really be working together to benefit our entire community and I think that, I, I don't want to speak for the board because we actually haven't had the official conversation, but in terms of the needs of the city and public safety and how much we rely on um public safety in terms of making sure that our kids are safe too, it's all our kids, it's our community's kids. Um, that, that these are, um, this infrastructure frankly just can't wait any longer. Um, just like the city infrastructure can't wait any longer, the school infrastructures can't wait any longer. We have been fortunate, well, we haven't hit, hit huge emergencies, but like I said, we've had to do roofs that um we haven't wanted to. Um, not the millions and millions, but, well, it is millions, uh but not the tens of millions or hundreds of millions that it could be to have to do it in an emergency that exists or shut down facilities, which we can't do. We can't, I mean, we could stick our kids in portables like, like we know, which we have done in the past. Um, so anyways, what, what I'm asking for is knowing that you guys have a project coming up too. We're all worried about the bottom line, we're all worried about our pocketbooks and our seniors on fixed incomes and our young families that have moved to the island to put every drop of, of money that they have in it to be able to live in this community. Um, but also weighing that with the needs of our facilities and um we believe that this is a really smart plan. I mean, Dan talked about the sustainability features of, of the, some of the building. Um, this, the, the middle school is finishing the middle school. Um, from the twenty-fourteen, twenty-seventeen project and um then specific educational projects at high school, the stadium um backrooms, the, which are not fun to go into, I'm sure you guys have experienced that as well, but our robotics lab, the radio facilities, the commons, the lunch space, some safety aspects, some not as fun things like the HVAC systems and and um fire security, things like that that cost a lot of money, as we all know. Um, and then some ADA projects uh uh in this building and a crest as well. Um, we believe that this is a, it's, it's frankly, it's on the same scope as the twenty-fourteen bond in today's dollars. Um, and it's the same, it's the same size and one of our main goals was really to, we know that it's going to be a tax bump, but what we're really looking at and and we can provide all of this documentation, you'll see it more and more as we get closer to April. But it's really being able to have a consistent and stable tax impact on our community, so people know it's coming. We know that there's going to be future projects down the road as we have three aging, aging elementary schools that we know are going to need work in the next five, ten, fifteen, twenty years, whatever the future decides. Um, and really being able to have that um, that stable tax implication, knowing that there's other infrastructure in the city that our taxpayers are going to be paying for and we share those too, as well as our district boundaries and our, and our city boundaries. So we're hoping that we can get the support, just like we're hoping that we're able to give the support to the city when, when you guys are ready to come and ask the taxpayers. Um, but this is what happens when we wait, you know, fifty, sixty, seventy years in between projects, is it all kind of coming at once, unfortunately, and if we can structure these things where, you know, it's for the entire community, we're a we and we benefit from each other, I think that benefits us all. So we're hoping that um, we're hoping that we can see, I'm not asking to put anyone on the spot, but we're hoping to see support from, from our electeds and our staff um as much as we can, um and then really being able to communicate to our community that, um, you know, we're recognizing the financial impact, but infrastructure costs a lot of money and um we're hoping to do it in a really smart way, we think this is a great step to be doing right now. Yes, there's future plans, but none of that has been decided. As part of our bond, we also um have put a million dollars or so into planning. Um, frankly, the next steps in terms of really doing a deep dive into the elementary schools, what's needed. Um, what does our enrollment numbers look like, hopefully those are gonna, we're expecting them to flatten out. Um, so anyways, long story short, I think you guys also need sixty percent to pass bonds, is that right? Which we hope will change in the future, just future planning. Our, our um criteria is sixty percent right now, we're hoping the legislature will make a change to that, but that's not going to impact April. Um, and so we're just hoping, if you have any questions or concerns, um come to us and uh our staff and um Brandy and Fred can answer these questions a whole lot better than I can, but I'm really proud of this plan, I think, you know, it's been a lot, it's been, we've been working on it since I've been um and elected in twenty-seventeen. Um, using a ton of community input, all the lessons we've learned from our past bonds in twenty-fourteen, our failed bond in twenty-twelve, our past bonds in, in the nineties and our failed bond right before that. Um, so we learned a lot that I know that you guys are going to benefit from as well and in, in needing to do the, the work that you do, so thank you for listening. And please reach out and um, and hopefully we can go forward as a team and a community to um make our city look like how it feels in our hearts, because it doesn't look that way right now, but hopefully we can all get there together.
Thank you. I, I second that, please reach out if you have questions or want to know more about specifics, although, although it's actually um Dan and Deborah, whoever are on the facilities planning committee, so rather than me, so maybe reach out to them. Um, Councilmember Weineberg?
Yeah, I just wanted to uh add on that uh, as a community, we need to do both, we need to have uh revitalized schools and we also need to have a modernized infrastructure as far as the uh, the water in the sewer uh and the systems that got, most of which got installed back in the nineteen forty's when the first bridges uh opened uh to the island. Um, and we can do both, uh, we have been doing both, uh, the city council for several years now has been steadily increasing our investment in uh water and sewer and we're seeing dividends in that. Uh, there, uh, the number of water main breaks we were seeing per year was increasing until last year, when it dropped uh by a factor of four. Uh, so uh we're, uh, we're seeing the, the returns on that and we're, we're likely going to have to continue to uh issue bonds. We have the ability as, as a council to do council manic bonds as well as bonds that we send to the voters. Uh, so there's a, a combination of different ways that we can get the funding for it. I think that we should coordinate, as you guys are suggesting, in uh our approaches to the voters uh when we want to come forward with something, if you come with too much all at once, uh then they're less likely to accept it. Uh, but I, I don't think that we need to hold back on uh fixing the, the water and sewer pipes that, because we need that and the schools need it as well.
Thank you.
Well, I was going to, when, uh, first of all, I want to thank you when the, the power outage came out and all the work that you did and having the community center for, for our community, the same for the school. I thought that that was a great example of how we can partner and do different things and also I think it showed on both sides the vulnerabilities that we have in, for example, communications, how as soon as the tower collapsed, tower, nobody got uh uh communication from the school, from the city and different things, and I think this is a great opportunity for us to uh keep kind of bringing ideas on how we can, if we have, and we will have another emergency maybe in ten years, maybe tomorrow, maybe, we don't know, but uh uh thinking outside the box, how we can kind of uh use the most resources together. And um, I think that this is, this is the opportunity to keep working on that because we, we are a small island at the end. So we need each other uh all the time and thank you very much for that because I think that that was a huge uh effort on, on, yes. I know that was not easy, so.
But, you know, that's probably a good transition to the last item, which, you know, we, we wanted to touch on the collaboration between the city and the school district during the bond cyclone. You know, we had twenty-six thousand plus people without power, plus the people to come to Mercer Island for their jobs, which is uh also not a small number of people and being able to uh react to that in a way where we were Public Works and Police were getting people safely moved through roads that were blocked, people were uh red-tagged into neighborhoods where they couldn't leave their homes because they were blocked on both sides by downed trees and power lines. Power lines at PSE, you know, had surveyed and known to be down, but uh didn't have the resources because they were lining uh lightning on the way in from out of the region that hadn't, hadn't arrived or were uh being routed other places, higher priority places. We had for the first time by tension lines that went down with trees and by a park and uh those, those lines, when they go down in those holes specifically, two of which were snapped, requiring specialized crews and equipment to come in to, to replace them, so we had uh power outages that lasted longer than normal and what we learned in that is the, the south cell towers and the mobile phone infrastructure, a lot of it didn't have generators and they had battery backups, it only lasted about a day and so citywide communications for most of the island went down about twenty-four hours into the storm and that was the peak period where the city wanted to reach out to residents, make sure people were safe, they wanted to hear from people uh to be sure that they were safe and then it was on the needs, you know, do you need anything? Uh, houses didn't have heating or cooling, people didn't have uh ways to get out of neighborhoods, the people needed medicine, pharmacies were closed. There were just a lot of unique needs around that, that storm. I was testifying down in Olympia today with the mayors of uh Issaquah, Sammamish and the surrounding cities, asking for financial uh relief into emergency funds that would go to reimburse cities for extraordinary un uh budgeted costs for these kinds of things, we don't uh bite it for the overtime for a week of people working twenty-four-seven, which is your full public utilities suite of uh folks and, and your policing and fire compliments. But you bring people in overtime and, and they, they literally sleep and live in the city uh during those events. Uh, what I can say is that having gone door, door-to-door with a lot of the city folks, with other volunteers, with our cert volunteers, being able to offer the schools' facilities at the south end, you know, we have the community center up and running as a charging station, as a warming center, as a place for people to gather and at least be around uh information, the opening of the middle school was a huge benefit and we really appreciate uh the quick reaction on that, to be able to have that open uh near the end of the emergency, but nobody knew it was near the end of the emergency. And uh so those kind of collaborations are extremely important to us, we know that we can reach out. I think we did some fueling uh sharing during that period of time, you guys have done some critical upgrades to your fueling infrastructure that facilitated uh being able to fuel city vehicles when uh our other networks were out and you know, one of the things that we saw within the region is that public fuel stations had no power and had no backup. And so they were either out of fuel or couldn't deliver fuel and so the district was uh critical and be able to point, uh, you know, have a point of uh fueling for some police and, and diesel-powered vehicles if we needed it, so we appreciate that. And I don't know if there was, you know, either whatever you wanted to add to that, but you never know when these events are going to happen, so it's great to know that we have a partner.
There's early conversation that uh Ian and uh members of your team and our radio station are talking about uh, you know, how can we use the radio station in the future for communication? Um, and so there's, you know, some behind-the-scenes things happening there, um, because that is a way, but you know, and we've also leaned on you, uh, you know, your watch commander on the phone at four-thirty in the morning, giving us updates on the roads, uh, so we can make good decisions for the schools. Um, helping out to uh uh plow uh from time to time to help us out there or sand or we run out of salt and there's been plenty of times in the past where your team has been essential to helping us and a plug for the YFS giving from the Hard Breakfast coming up next week and our counselors last, I think you just uh reapproved our um opportunity to uh allow your, your staff to bring their children to Mercer Island schools and um, you know, that list kind of goes on, I'll turn it over to board members, but uh it really is a partnership, um, up and down.
I will say I love Mercer Island, I think it's part of, it's, it's nothing worth saying, it's a great place to be, so thank you for your partnership.
I would just say thank you all, we all know that it's a lot of hours and it's hard work. Uh, I'm a, a senior at the school district, I'm going to be in a few years and yeah, this week was a little tough, driving really some tough. A little pleasure policy, seriously. Appreciate all the experience, you know, it's been very hard and, uh, we, uh, feel.
I don't think we can ever um end a meeting without expressing the gratitude for um our gold standard mental health counseling uh collaboration and um, it really is, it's, it's really one of the things I'm most proud of that, that our community was able to provide for our families, for our students and our families, um, to be able to serve students where they are in the schools. Um, we could not do that without the city's support, obviously. Um, and, you know, frankly, it just makes so much sense, but it's so, I mean, I know that that's one of the things that families appreciate about the services that we're able to offer and um, you know, every, anytime someone says something to me, I said thank the city because we couldn't do it, they do it and um we really appreciate it, it's, it's provided, it's, it's our It's it's provided, it's our kids are the main reason most of us are here. And so thank you for that continued support.
Just to piggyback off of what Deborah said, I mean, without question, in my way, that's one of the unique aspects of the relationship. And then also, in our own district, a big victory has been the cellphone policy, I think, which goes hand in hand in sort of emphasizing the need to be cognizant of the effect of technology and to be mindful and to make sure that we make our city as conducive to raising children as possible. So thank you.
We're very grateful for everything that you guys do as a council and for everything that the city staff do. And I'm very proud of what we're saying.
Thank you.
Can I ask just to, what's your favorite part of this, the city? I don't know. Students heard the best part of the show.
On all the streetlights, like at the top, Gallagher, that has been like, even it's like a small thing, like that's a big thing that like students like feel safer and likes walking at night or like being there. And also like, yeah, I agree, like the counselors are massively like helpful for students, like knowing that they not only have like their their school counselors, but they also have like city counselors and resources for their families. That's also very massively impactful to me.
Yeah, so I second every time you say that, like, the counselors are definitely very helpful. I know people who have been massively helped out by those counselors for a variety of issues. They're definitely great in our schools. And then also I really appreciate the focus on safety in the city, especially coming from my perspective as a biker, like I know so many people who love biking around Mercer Island. And so the emphasis on trying to keep it a safe space for bikers and for our kids who, you know, love to bike around the city and stuff, definitely appreciate it.
Derek, final chance to plug your breakfast.
The weather's going to go, thank you, everybody. It's five hundred people signed up. That's one of the biggest events on the island and it's a great chance to come support school counselors and all Y F S. And again, that connection with the city, our city is the only city that does this. And we rely on community support as well as for the city. So thank you.
Thank you so much. So we will, this ends section two of our meeting. We just have a short little bit of regular business. So we'll take a two minute recess so these guys can be free fully.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, we are heading to, we are going back in session to our one piece of regular business. Yeah. So we are, the last, the only item of regular business on our agenda tonight is appointing the pro and con committee members for the bond proposition, meaning the people who are going to write the pro statement and the con statement. And we only have one con person who has applied. So that discussion is probably pretty easy. But I'll just say, we have to appoint at least one person and up to three people for each committee. So like, we only have the one cons, so we couldn't appoint that one con. And then we have to pick one to three people from the other committee. Just because we only pick one to three people doesn't mean other people can't be part of the committee and help, but these will be the three named people who are responsible. And we have to vote separately on the con and the pro. So my suggestion would be that we, if 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 anyone wants to discuss the con applicant, but we don't really have any choice other than to vote for him.
Okay, we should vote.
Go ahead and make a motion.
I I want to vote for that con. He probably.
Okay, all in favor of naming Mike Zero as the one committee member for the con position? Please say aye, students.
Aye.
Board members?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, that is two zero five zero. So Mike Zero is our con person. And then the pro side, we have, how many applicants? One?
One came in after deadline. You have four that came in before.
So the applicants are Connor, Ald, Frank Scott, Samantha, Vivian Feld, Leslie Farrell, and Juliette Hatz. And Frank, Samantha, and Leslie have kind of applied as a as a unit. They're they're all willing to work together. Um.
Especially. Connor Ald is a senior at Mercer High School. And, yeah, I'm pretty sure he joined C M I Ts after like we reached out to him and like let him know that that committee exists. So.
We agreed to have student force, I think, on that committee.
Is he eighteen? That was the only.
He doesn't have to be.
Okay. He has to be a resident and he's a resident.
Yeah. And he is, but he is eighteen. It doesn't matter, actually.
I, I, my, my, my first thought when I saw that he had applied was phenomenal. I mean, I love it, period. But these are people that are named on in the voter's pamphlet. And I think that we need to look also at who, at their their name recognition. It cannot be overstated. And the fact that I know our students reached out to him to join the committee and participate is excellent and hugely important. I worry as much about the name recognition. It's like, you know, voters that are uninformed, they're looking to see who's endorsing. And I, that, I, I, I know that Samantha, Leslie, and Frank have are all on C M I Ts and have been working for that. And also, and all three have have strong name recognition. And that can't be understated. That's.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I I think you made good points. I guess the only other like comments is I thought that Frank Shaw, I know, has been involved with the facilities naming committee. So it's sort of interesting, sort of seeing how interest in school projects can be tied to other like policies. So an observation there.
And in my way of that is.
Yeah.
I will say that I didn't know, kind of before, working with him on the facilities naming committee, and it's been a really wonderful experience. He's been terrific to work with.
I agree with that.
Yeah. And he is, has one of the best numbers, brings, Samantha's not here, I can say it. One of the best numbers that I've ever seen.
Just a few questions. With this one, if we, when we appoint three, that doesn't mean that the others cannot collaborate.
Correct.
Just stating that as as somebody that that does want to voice up a student there, but it might might be important to recognize that that this is something that it might be important for the board to, to know where they are. And but acknowledging that that's also, it's a voice, but it might be my comment in a different way. So.
And the same is true on the con, Mr. Zero can use other people too. It's not just the single.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
I wonder if the students have an opinion about the importance of having a student voice named on that committee or if you just feel like he would be involved or or do you?
I mean, personally, I wouldn't be so sure. I don't know how many people, especially seniors, would actually recognize him as a student. So it might not carry a lot of merit. I would probably even know.
Yeah, I mean, do you know that the vote, like if it indicates like age or like background?
It's just his name.
Yeah, yeah. So I think like having a more like recognizable name would be like, and also like being on a committee, like a separate committee, he can still exercise a lot of like help and power. So.
And it's the emotion.
I believe that we appoint Bernie Scott, Larry Carroll, and Samantha would be called to the pro committee.
Second. All in favor of appointing those three people to the pro committee? Please say aye, students.
Aye.
Board members?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, that is two zero five zero. So we have one con and three pro.
Great. So from here, just a reminder, we submit this to the county. And then the county takes it from there. They work directly with the county, they'll write their pro statement or con statement. And then they submit it to the county. The county then sends it to one another to write the rebuttal. And then it goes back to the county. So your responsibilities and ours will be done as soon as we submit those names. So we'll do that in short orders to give them as much time as possible to give it in by February twenty third or eighth.
Thank you so much. That's it. Since we already did our board announcements, do I have a quick turn?
So moved.
So even if I'm planning an advocacy day, we're going to try to meet the same legislatures. So currently we're planning for the thirteenth, so next Thursday. And we've been talking to students throughout like the National Student Movement Association. So we have twelve students so far from forty five different districts. So it's been pretty good and we so far set up seven.
That's great.
This is going to Olympia then.
Yeah. Congratulations. Another them at school.
Has very good nineteen seventy two in the field.
So we have a motion and a second. I'm in favor of adjourning this meeting.
Did you need something from us or you were telling us that?
Oh, just letting you know. Yeah, and like, there was this conversation like social media before and like word usage. And like, we like started our rep Instagram, right? And so like, we also like, it'd be useful to learn about some guidelines for like, how are we going to frame our like short infographic summaries for students? Like, how is that going to align with like, how?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Another day that you didn't skip.
Okay. Okay, all in favor of, darling, please say aye, students.
Aye.
Board members?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yes.